Welcome, everyone. It's been a long time since I had to use the gavel. We've got some great conversations happening this afternoon and appreciate you all being here today. I'm going to call the meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, March the 5th, and we'll do our roll call to establish our quorum. Mr. Loeb?
Here.
Mr. Garza?
Here.
Dr. Adami?
Here.
Ms. Everett?
Here.
Dr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Krul?
Here.
I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. I want to offer apologies from Dr. Ananda Babaly for not being able to join us today. He actually is in Washington, DC with his work with the World Affairs Council of South Texas. He is actually speaking or being a part of a meeting focusing, well, is part of that work in Washington, DC today. And then Mr. Bill Kelly had a conflict and could not join us. Would you please join us in a moment of silence? Thank you. Dr. Turner, would you lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join us as we read our Delmar College Vision Statement. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." Thank you. Delmar College is streaming our live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meetings on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. We don't have an opportunity for any general public comment. If anyone is here to make comment on an item not on the agenda, please let us know. Seeing none, we will move on and start with our recognitions. So as Mr. Augie Rivera is making his way to the podium, I did want to give a special recognition and shout out to our foundation director and our vice president, Mary McQueen. She is retiring at the end of this month, and this is her last board meeting with us. So thank you, Mary, for your service to Delmar College.
More to come on that.
Now turning the podium over to Mr. Rivera.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board of Regents. It's rare that I get to bring in my outside fun stuff with my daily work stuff, but today is one of those days. Mike Jones and Amy Jones, who are members of our Delmar College, you might note that Mike is wearing his scout uniform. Both of them are heavily involved in scouting, and they're passing out a couple of gestures of gratitude and some information for you. I'm just going to introduce it. With me here at the podium is Mr. Martin Marty Sepulveda. He serves as a scout executive for the South Texas Council of the Boy Scouts of America, and recently there were a couple of pretty big events that I'm going to have him talk about a little bit, and then also have Mike and Amy provide color commentary on how it went. So I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Marty Sepulveda.
Thank you, Augie. Good afternoon, Regents, staff, and community members. It's a great honor to be here in front of this group. We value Delmar College as a community partner in our mission to develop young people to be the best leaders we can for our communities, and it fits right in with the vision statement of Delmar College. Just a quick few notes. Thank you for really providing those opportunities for our young people to be on your campuses. And I say campuses because we've been on the Windward and then the Oso Creek recently. I'll let Mike talk about the event that we just passed out, the awards. But last weekend at the Oso Creek Campus, we had over 200 people attend an Eagle Scout class reception honoring our 68 Eagle Scouts from this past year, highlighting their service and community service projects. It introduces people, every time we're on your campuses, it introduces a new set of families to higher education. I hear it every time we're on campus, parents coming up to us and saying, "Thank you for being a partner with Delmar, for having our scouts on these buildings and these facilities. It's just wonderful." Thank you behalf of our Executive Board, behalf of the 2,000 youth we serve across South Texas. Thank you so much for allowing us to use your facilities, use your staff, and to have some great partners like Mike and Amy. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Marty. Again, we want to extend our appreciation. The handout I just gave you gives a listing of the different courses that we offered, and also all of the faculty and staff and students who stepped forward to make that event possible. Amy and I are happy to serve as the co-chairs for the Merit Badge College here at Delmar College and to coordinate these efforts with the South Texas Council. We had an increase in attendance this past year over last year. We had a gap between 2018 to this past year in our Merit Badge College, and then we were able to bring that back. We had 150 youth attend, along with their parents and their scout leaders. We also had the council coordinating meeting, which brought several leaders from throughout the council to our area. And the students who attended, or the scouts who attended, came from five different councils this time. So they came in not just from our South Texas area, but from surrounding area. We had a phenomenal amount of support from our college relations department. We had the Channel 3 and Channel 6 both attend and get some good media coverage and representation for our college. We had some fantastic support from our catering services here at Delmar College. They came and worked on Saturday for us so they could provide a lunch to our scouts, and then as well as continuing education. And Bowdar was also there to be a part of our special event. So again, it was great. If you're not familiar with merit badges, Amy has actually brought some merit badge hats as our kids. For a scout to advance in scouting, they have to earn these different ranks. And each one of those levels, they have to earn certain badges. 14 of those are required, and those are designed to provide a well-rounded citizen. We have citizenship in the community, in nation, world, society, first aid, cooking, personal management, personal fitness, family life, quite a few of those that they have to take. But then there's a lot more. We have 138 merit badges in our catalog right now that they all can expose. And our faculty stepped forward to offer so many of those that these youth do not have opportunities to get elsewhere. And so we had welding, we had architecture, drafting. We also had our nursing faculty go forth for first aid, and our barbecue cook team took on that cooking merit badges. And so I spent some of my time over there. I showed up with this work, and I was ready to go. And the patches that you received also, every time a scout attends an activity, they get an activity patch. And that's what these are. These represent what they participated in, and then these are something that are collectibles as they go through other scouting careers and even into their adult years. I know I still have some. I've been in scouting for 49 years now, and I still have all my patches that I've picked up over that time. So this is something. Amy, if you want to say something?
I just, again, want to thank you for your support. And one thing that Mike mentioned that I just want to reiterate is for some of these scouts, we're talking about ages 10 to 17, for some of these scouts, this is their first time on a college campus. As I mentioned to a lot of you and a lot of people during this weekend, our kids grew up on this campus. They've been in our office, they've been, not literally, they've been in our offices, they've been down these hallways. But for some of these kids, for some of these scouts, this is their first time on a college campus, and we forget that some of these kids don't have the opportunity to do that. So to see in their eyes, wow, this is a college campus. These are the things that this college can offer me either now through dual credit or when I'm a college student. They're also very fascinated with our vending machines, you know, so whatever it takes, they really are, whatever it takes to get them here. And so it's such a great service that we're offering these scouts now to show them, you know, the dual credit offerings that we can give them, and also for their parents. I had a lot of dual credit conversations and a lot of conversations with parents about all of the different offerings that we have. So thank you so much for your support.
And just one more thing about our faculty. In scouting, we are required to take youth protection training. Every single one of our faculty members stepped up without blinking an eye. They took that training to make sure we were safe for our kids. And some of them even came back telling me that they have ideas now to add to their curriculum. Our woodworking instructors now said, "You know what? We need to start working hand tools back into our curriculum because nobody really knows how to use them anymore." It's all has to have more than a battery sometimes. And so, well, again, we are excited for this opportunity to continue this mission and to continue supporting scouting and Delmar College.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, while you're doing your photo op, we do want to say thank you very much for including the Delmar family. A thank you to all of those instructors for working on the different merit badges. That's an incredible, incredible gift that you all have given. And I'm going to look to Jeff and to Patricia to make sure that all those scouts get an application to Delmar College. If not, an automatic acceptance. How's that?
Madam Chair, it won't be just the scouts. It'll be the adult leaders who also come and are able to benefit. Having been present at these different events, I can personally attest to the full engagement and the compliments that were received for being here at Delmar College. What a nice place it was. It was wonderful. So as somebody who's a little involved in scouting, thank you. Thank the board, and thank you, Dr. Eskimia, for always being open door.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing the program to our attention. Now we're going to turn it over to Mr. Garcia, who's going to talk about a Triple Crown Award. I didn't know that there was a Triple Crown Award for GFOA.
There it is. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to congratulate Mr. John Johnson, Dr. West, Jackie Landrum, Christina Gonzalez, Mike Bratton, Alenda Edelman, Jeff Olson, and their respective team members for earning the Government Financial Officers Triple Crown Award. This prestigious award is in recognition for excellence in the college's three annual financial reports. This includes the college's audit report, the budget report, and our popular annual financial report for fiscal years, for fiscal year 2021. As a final thought, Delmar College is the only public community college in the state of Texas to receive this Triple Crown Award. I will now ask the team to step up to the plate and accept this award.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. The only community college in Texas to receive the Triple Crown. That's incredible. That's incredible. Thank you for that. Dr. Halcom?
Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskimia, I'm pleased to announce Kristi Urbic, Chairperson and Assistant Professor of the Kinesiology Department, was awarded a Pathways Project Fellowship by the Texas Success Center. The Community College Research Fellowship support research studies and related activities to build the knowledge base concerning talent, strong pathways, reform efforts. Ms. Urbic is to assist in developing credential map guidelines for statewide use by the 50 community colleges and to engage collaboratively with the Texas success leadership. Credential maps can show the workforce learner how to navigate through intentionally designed programs, beginning with short-term credentials and early workplace learning, leading toward high-value employment opportunities. Academic transfer students can also use the maps to identify and earn short-term credentials of value that enhance their skills related to the intended back laureate degrees. These maps will be clear guides for students in their path to future job goals. Ms. Urbic has been reviewing the credential maps generated by 50 community colleges. At our last Pathways Institute, we all had to submit credential maps, and so she has the task of looking at all of them at all 50 colleges. And she's looking at the structural elements, the typography, and commonalities. Ms. Urbic will conduct student focus groups to gather student perspectives on community college credential maps. In fact, she's having focus groups today, tomorrow, and the next day. So she's got quite a bit of work ahead of her these few days before spring break. The goal of the fellowship is to design credential templates that better reflect the principles of guided pathways. Our Pathways team that we have here at the college nominated Ms. Urbic for this fellowship based on her being a strong academic leader. She currently is a doctoral student in the Roush Community College Leadership Program. She's a dedicated community college practitioner and educational researcher with expertise in community college leadership. So she's been a pleasure to work with, and she's a great asset to not only the Texas Success Center, but also to Delmar College. Please join me in congratulating Kristi Urbic.
I just really appreciate the recognition and the support from everyone, and I look forward to being able to give you what I come up with at the end. And like Dr. Halcom said, I do have the focus groups today, so I'm hoping someone shows up. And I did give them, I'm giving them pizza, so sometimes that works. So thank you so much again, and I appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thank you for serving. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Leonard Rivera, and he'll talk to us about being a National
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to provide the announcement that Delmar College was one of 10 community colleges across the country, and I say the country, not the state, but the country, to be a finalist in the Bellwether Awards competition. It is a competition, and the college got judged on a lot of very different types of programming. That is our showcase, our formal presentation, and then just kind of a Q&amp;A session that they had with our representatives that attended the Bellwether Consortium this past Monday, a week ago. So we were awarded this fine award, and I want to, you know, this award means a lot to me, and it means a lot to the folks that worked hard to get to this point. And it is a point of pride, it's a prestigious award, as I was reminded over and over again at the assembly that we had last week in San Antonio. But I want to, you know, let everyone know that in order for us to get this far, I want to thank our president, Dr. Mark Eskimia, our Board of Regents, that have always supported all our types of accomplishments and have always been an advocate for us to go after being the very best college in Texas and across the country now. I also would like to extend congratulations to my boss, Ms. Lenore Keys, our COO here at Delmar College, for always encouraging me and my staff and our division to always be the best. Dr. Jana Halcom, who with her faculty and our academic deans and chairs have really put us to the forefront nationally on the stackable credentials process. And this is what we got recognized for, was the stackable credentials process, where we take folks that enter the college through the CE route, this continuing education route, and they're able to convert those courses into academic credit towards earning a Level 1, a Level 2, and I dare say an associate's degree, and one day, very, very nearby, it's a bachelor's degree in applied science or even nursing, you know, so here at the college. And also, we couldn't even get to this point if it weren't for the kindness and generosity of Jeff Olson's team. And Jeff, I want to extend and just say heartfelt congratulations to your team. Jeff, Jason, Rob, Tanya, Mike, and Jesse, who provided us the branding that we needed, the PowerPoint, the video pieces that we presented at the Bellwether. We were certainly second to none when it came to those types of events, and I thank you very much, Jeff, and your fine team for getting us to that point nationally. Of course, it took a special team to get us to this point, and the team, and I want them to come forward in this particular order. I have Mr. Paul Creasy. He's our interim dean of Architecture, Aviation, and Automotive. Paul, do you want to come forward? Paul was very instrumental, and he's a true example, and he works under Davis Merrill. Davis, you want to stand up as well? So he's always, he's kind of shy these days, but you know. But, you know, what it takes is the encouragement by the dean, Davis, and Paul has been able to run with that dream and has been able to open his arms and his programs to developing these stackable credentials within the CE realm that goes towards a lot of the programs that he oversees. And so Paul, congratulations on that. Also, Ms. Elizabeth Zamora, if you could come up? Ms. Elizabeth Zamora is a program manager under our Continuing Education Career and Industry Programs area. She's been a great advocate, a great mentor to many, and a great advisor to all. And so Elizabeth, thank you so much for all that you did to make us nationally acclaimed. And then finally, couldn't have been done without the glue, right, that held everyone together. That's Ms. Rachel Benavides. Ms. Rachel, can you please come forward? And she's our Senior Director for Continuing Education and Community Education here at Delmar College, has been with us for a number of years, and really was that glue that held the team together and really created the synergy that we had going forward. And so, you know, exactly, you know, this award could not have been done without the participation and the advocacy of all these folks that are behind me. And then lastly, without least, we also have the Division of Continuing Education and Off-Campus Programs, if they could just stand to be recognized. We have a lot of them in the audience today, so please, if you're under the Continuing Education and Off-Campus Programs, if you could please stand to be recognized. These folks are working hard every day to make sure that we uphold the values that we got with this award, but also make sure that we're always at the cutting forefront of all things that we do at Delmar College. And so I wanted to take it, just another thing to say thank you all for your encouragement. And one thing that I want to make especially before I leave the podium, because only one time to do this, is that this team that I have behind me and the entire college as a whole, just kind of a little food for thought. In 2020, we got the Governor's Award for Our Rebuilt Texas, and Mary was a big part of that, so thank you, Mary. 2021, we were recognized by the Texas Success Center for Stackable Credentials. 2022, we got the STAR Award. I know many of the board members were there in Austin when we had that special occasion. 2023, we got the Community Choice Award for Best of the Best Adult Education Programs. And now 2024, we got the Bellwether Finalist Award. So again, thank you all so much for the opportunity, and again, we're here to serve you. We're here to serve the community. So thank you so much.
While they're coming up for the picture, go ahead, Dr. Eskimia.
No, go ahead.
I was going to let you say your.
Okay, well, I was just gonna, Leonard covered it for sure, but I had the pleasure of joining the team in San Antonio last week. I think it was last week. Last week, and just watching them among the other groups from every, just about every state in the Union. I mean, from Hawaii to Wisconsin to Florida to Washington State and so forth. It was an incredible presence. It was an incredible showing, and I got to talk to some of the judges. I knew some of the judges. I know some of the judges. And the respect, the admiration for the professionalism for this innovative program that we're offering here with the stackability, convertibility, and stackability of credits is something that the whole nation is watching. Incredible showing. To be in the top 10 speaks only to the very, very tip of the iceberg. And it is, you know, you know what's underneath the iceberg, right? Underneath everything, all the good work. That's what this team is about. It's about hard work, and when you have the rest of the nation touting our programs and trying to replicate what we're trying to do, it's a special thing. Thank you for, thank you to the team. It was an honor joining you all last week.
Congratulations. Next, Mr. Olson.
Thank you. I wanted to take a minute to recognize Jessie Krobosinski. She's technically our digital services specialist, but you probably know her better as the brilliant mind behind a lot of our social media that has been appearing lately. And that brilliance was celebrated recently when she received the American Advertising Federation's Big Wigs 24 Award for Best Social Media Manager/Content Creator. Definitely a well-deserved award. Her work's an inspiration, not just to the audience that she serves, but also her team members on CRO as well. So I wanted to ask Jessie and her supervisor, if he's here, Jason Houlihan, to please come up for a moment so they can be recognized. I believe you have the award with you too, right? Come on up. She carries it everywhere now. Congratulations to both of you, and thank you for pushing the envelope with our social media, and thanks for always keeping it fresh and really keeping us on the leading edge of what we're doing.
Jessie, you don't want to say anything?
Jessie, come on. Come on. Oh, my gosh. Thank you, guys, for your votes and support and sense of humor.
So just because I heard a snippet of this at lunch today, you are a Collegiate High School student. Tell us a little bit about your background and how you bring that background to what you do with us every day.
Oh, my gosh. I didn't know I was going to be interviewed.
That's okay.
Yeah, I graduated from Collegiate High School in 2011. I was the second graduating class from Collegiate. Through my experience with that school, when I went to Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi, I applied for an internship with KCS Public Relations. And part of my experience at Collegiate helped me secure the internship that laid the foundation, the groundwork for me to be where I am today.
I just love homegrown and reaching great heights, and we just love your creativity. I know that several of us on the board on a regular basis are, although our friends are probably not your target audience, we like to share your social media posts anyway.
Thank you.
I have people calling me from, or texting me, communicating with me one way or another from all over the country about, because I push out. If you're on social media with me, you'll see that I'm pushing out Delmar constantly, as you might imagine and/or expect. But it's, but hearing the comments from around the country, it's amazing how far this has reached and so forth. I have family members who are in comparable types of positions around the state of Texas that are stealing content from you, whether you know it or not. I don't know if you have rights to that or not, but anyway, or anyway, it's a wonderful thing, and your story makes it all the better.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And next, Cheryl Sanders is going to talk about a couple of our outstanding students.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskimia. It's my privilege to announce that the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Digital Learning Team selected current student and current student government president, Sofia Jimenez, as one of three students to participate in a virtual student panel titled "The Impact of Innovation: Student Perspectives on Digital Advancement on Campus" for the Texas Higher Edge Leadership Conference. Leaders in education, government, and industry convened December 12 through 13 in Austin to discuss the road ahead for higher education. The panel introduced lived experiences while students shared how institutional innovation has impacted their educational and career journeys. I can have Sofia come up.
Do you want to say anything about the panel?
I was just really honored to be there, to be able to share some of the student voices that I have the opportunity to hear. That's where my passion is, is just sharing what students are needing and what students are wanting, and being able to advocate for them on such a high level was a great honor, and I appreciate that. And I definitely would not have had those opportunities if it wasn't for Delmar and the advisors and the mentors that I've had. So can I say how completely and truly grateful I am for all of you in this room and for the people at Delmar that have definitely been a guiding light for me.
Yes. Stay, because we have something else. Additionally, I would like to recognize Sofia and recent alumnus Alberto Martinez, who couldn't be here today. They were both selected for the 2024 Texas Community College Student Advisory Council. This opportunity is a year-long paid virtual remote fellowship program for 10 to 12 students to learn about state and local policy related to community colleges, gain communication and advocacy skills, and use their voices to advocate directly to decision-makers. The Student Advisory Council is organized and supported by Young Invincibles, the Education Trust in Texas, Every Texan, Breakthrough Central Texas, as a joint initiative of the Texas Post-Secondary Advocates Coalition for Equity. And Sofia actually just attended the kickoff event this past weekend.
Yes, it was very exciting, very intimidating. There are a lot of wonderful, young, educated students out there, and I was very honored to be selected. I did find out that more than 1,000 people applied and 10 got it. So when I found out 1,000 people applied or more, I was like, hey, they're not going to call me. So I was definitely honored, and again, I cannot express in words how grateful I am for Delmar and for all the people I've met here, especially Cheryl and Ms. Beverly Cage and Sonia, and just everybody in the student leadership office that have really guided me and the counseling department. There's just been so many people, too many to name. So just thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, and thanks for your willingness to represent our students on such great platforms. Congratulations.
And finally, it's with great pleasure that I announce that And finally, it's with great pleasure that I announce that Gabby Chavera, Outreach Aid for the Delmar College Trio Educational Opportunity Center Grant Program, was selected by the Council of Opportunity in Education to serve as a National Student Leadership Congress Counselor for the 34th Educati-- sorry.
Thank you so much. And thanks for your willingness to represent--
I'm sorry, y'all.
That threw me off. For the 34th National Student Leadership Conference at American University in Washington, DC, June 8 through the 13th, 2024. All travel, room, and board expenses are paid, and she will receive a stipend. She'll have the opportunity to take part in facilitating a transformational, intensive, in-person, six-day leadership experience for pre-college trio students from across the United States and US territories. Federal trio programs are educational opportunity outreach programs designed to motivate and support students from disadvantaged backgrounds. Gabby.
Thank you so much. I'm very honored, and I'm very excited to go to Washington and be one of the 15 counselors chosen to the National Student Leadership Conference. Thank you.
Congratulations. Very proud of you. You have a great time. Thank you so much. Those are great recognitions. It's a lot to be proud of at Delmar College, that's for sure. We're gonna move on to our student success report, and we're gonna ask Dean Cody Greg, Cody Gregg, let me get that out of my mouth correctly. He's gonna talk about the Stone Writing Center. Cody, thanks for being here.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskamia, I'm really happy and honored to be here today to talk to you about the Stone Writing Center. It's really appropriate, I think, that the student success report follows the portion of the agenda where we do recognitions, because I see this as just a continuation of that. And I want to recognize and celebrate the success and dedication of the staff in the Stone Writing Center with this report. So for our slides, Stone Writing Center's been around a long time. It was founded in 1976 by Dr. Virginia Stone, who was the Chair of the English Department at that time. First, it was called the English Learning Lab. A little bit after that, it became known as the English Learning Center. It was the first writing center established by a college in the United States Southwest, and that makes it one of the oldest writing centers in the nation. And I think that's something that we should really celebrate and be proud of as an institution. In 2004, this board, the Board of Regents, voted unanimously to change the name to the Stone Writing Center in honor of Dr. Stone, the founder. And then in 2014, it moved to the White Library, where it became known as the Fourth, because it moved on to the fourth floor of the library. And then in 2017, it moved into the Learning Resources Division. Stone Writing Center currently has locations on all of our campuses, Heritage, Windward, and the Oso Campus. We currently have nine full-time staff, faculty and staff, with a total among them of 121 collective years of experience serving students. We additionally have professional writing tutors that are part-time staff, and we have 16 part-time staff as well who staff the Stone Writing Center. Services are delivered by professional degreed tutors. Our tutors have degrees. It may not be in English, it may be in another discipline, but we have degreed tutors. We provide writing consultations for students in all disciplines, not just writing. And in fact, in 2023, the greatest number of writing tutorials that we conducted were for English, obviously, INRW, which is Integrated Reading and Writing, Communication, Nurse Education, that one might be a little surprising, and History, not so surprising. In addition to that, there were tutorials for Dental Hygiene, Restaurant Management, and Economics. So we really, really have a breadth of students who come to the Stone Writing Center for our services. We provide 30-minute in-person tutoring consultations, no appointment needed, on a walk-in basis. If students choose to use our online services, they submit their essay through Canvas, and they can do that 24/7. Usually with our online consultations, we have a turnaround time of 24 to 48 hours, although at some times during the semester, midterms, toward the end of the semester, it can get a little bit longer than that just because of the volume that we're handling. In addition to the consultations, we have, we provide a wide variety of additional instructional workshops and service, some of those being partnerships with the Nursing Education Department to have specific workshops for them, as well as with developmental English. So a little bit about the numbers for you. From fall 2015 through fall 2023, now these are duplicated numbers, so a student can be counted in there twice. We had 84,141 individual consultations with students. And that is going through COVID. During COVID, we went all online. Students submitted their papers online, continuing through COVID. So 84,000 from 2015 through 2023. Last calendar year, 2023, there were 6,080 tutoring consultations. About 2,800 of those were on campus, and 3,200 of those were online. The last bullet on the service transition, really, that's just there to show you that as we went through the COVID-19 pandemic, our services kind of flip-flopped. In 2019, before we went into the COVID lockdowns, we had 69% on-campus tutorials, face-to-face tutorials, and 31% online. And now in 2023, that's kind of flipped a little bit to 47% on-campus and 53% online. So the majority is online now, as opposed to face-to-face. Students really, really love the services through the Stone Writing Center. The Stone Writing Center does a student satisfaction survey. You can see there on the slide, over 90% of students were satisfied with the help they received, the time it took to receive their feedback online, and believing that the tutoring session improved their writing skills. I wanted to bring a couple of quotes to you, just let you know what students have said on that survey. The first one is there at the bottom of this slide. "The information and help I received was clear and helpful. I was able to not only make appropriate changes, but understand why the changes were necessary. The tutor was respectful and helpful. I will always use the Stone Writing Center when I have a paper for school." Pretty glowing feedback there. And then finally, for this slide, this shows for you the difference in success for students who have visited the Stone Writing Center versus those who did not visit the Stone Writing Center. The green line represents students who attended one, at least one, or more writing consultations at the Stone Writing Center, and were enrolled in English 0305, which is developmental writing, 0306, which is developmental writing two, or INRW 0408, Integrated Reading and Writing. So these are developmental students. So the student was enrolled in a developmental English course or the Integrated Reading and Writing course, and attended one consultation at the Stone Writing Center. And you can see with that green line, it's significantly above the blue line, which represents those students who did not attend, who were enrolled in those courses but did not attend at least one consultation at the Stone Writing Center. Now, the Stone Writing Center staff are here with us today, and I'd like to ask them to stand up. That's Linda Eubank, and this is all of the assistant instructors who provide the services in the Stone Writing Center. And I wanted to recognize them, thank them very much for all that they do and for their unwavering commitment to student success. And that's about it. Dr. Eskamia, I know that you have some fond memories and wanted to share some stories as well.
I do. I do. And Linda, if you want to come up, or if any of your team members want to come up, that's fine. So I noticed your data didn't go back to 1980-something when I was here. But had it gone back that far, I would have been a part of that, of the use of the then Writing Center. I remember sitting in the old building, the former building that ironically I had to make the decision to bring down, to raise. That was a tough time, wasn't it, team? Yeah. They're like, what are you thinking, Eskamia? Yeah, I know. I purposely did not keep a brick from that. But I want y'all to know that I, as a student, was impacted by the services there. Of course, there were the different little green screens, the little green letters on the screen and so forth. And I was there diligently punching away. Between the Writing Center and the English Department, I tell them this, I've been saying this for years, since I arrived, made all the difference in my life as a student. And when I went on, I was a relatively strong writer. I'm giving myself probably not enough credit, but I'm just, I was a strong writer all the way through my doctoral program as a result of what, of my beginnings. And we're talking about this very team, this very program, this facet of our college that serves so many students. And I had, you know, my start there some years back. But I just, I just had to add that, this is all scripted, by the way, and we wanted to, I wanted to, they were gonna give you my little, my little three minutes of fame here as it relates to the now Stone Writing Center since 2004. So thanks, thanks to the team. Dean Gregg, thanks for your leadership. Thanks for all of y'all. I can't wait to show the new digs on the, on the, on the fourth floor of the, of the White Library. But the fact that it exists at all three primary campuses and so forth is an incredible testament to the team and the efforts that are gonna benefit our students. Thanks for that opportunity, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Dean Gregg? Oh, yes. Lots of applause. But are there any questions? This feels like a recognition. I have a question related to such a successful number between the students who don't have assistance from the Stone Writing Center and those that do and their pass rates. What are the reasons that students don't go ask for help? If the difference is that profound, what are the obstacles for students seeking that help? Do you have a sense?
I think embarrassment, first of all. Oftentimes, they're embarrassed to go. And they're embarrassed to ask for help.
Yes, I would definitely second that. At Laurie Jones at the Stone Writing Center, they, they've had a history of being told that they can't write. They've then internalized it. They believe they can't write instead of knowing that everybody can be a writer. They just need to practice. And so it's deep shame, it's deep hesitancy. And oftentimes, though, many of the developmental education instructors will encourage or require their students. And then I think that's really what we're starting to see, the buy-in. And so we have a developmental education initiative that we're beginning to work closely with developmental education instructors. One of our assistant instructors is conducting workshops for those developmental English courses, just to try to let them know we're a friendly place. It's not, it's not a badge of shame. It's actually a badge of courage. And in fact, every writer asks for help.
So it's up to the instructor to determine whether or not they're gonna require their students to go for at least one session, or, okay, I would think that, that would be a, there's a great indicator there that maybe that requirement is necessary, so.
Because it's always optional, but we learned students don't always do optional.
Right.
But as Laurie said, if we can get them to come through our doors one time, just one time, then they're sold, and they continue to come back.
I appreciate that.
Or work the online.
Mr. Loeb has a question.
Well, I was just gonna suggest that since the president of the college used the services, that he would make a good poster boy for the flyer to, you know, I mean, you know, have a great example. He's president of the college, and he went.
I bet there's a better example, but I'll be glad. Do whatever I can to help.
Can you show a before and after picture of--
He wasn't the only one. I may have gone when they first began. And again, I know it helped me. And certainly, shame is a factor. You think that you're not up to college level, you don't want everybody else to know about it. But it certainly, it was certainly helpful in helping me write the papers that I had to write, trying to get to school.
We talked about this before. I wish they had had it before I had married my English major wife. As an econ major, she's like, oh, don't, don't send anything before I get to read it.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate that report, Cody.
Jeff, I want to make sure that you noted that down, and we'll be sending a photographer to Dr. Eskamia's office.
Need a lot of Photoshop.
All right. We are going to transition to our college president's report. Dr. Eskamia.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. February is a busy month in terms of traveling for me, but I'd like to talk a little bit about three of the dates, three of the events that I participated in, beginning with February 20th, the TAC Legislative Committee continued to meet. And you can imagine what's going on there. We don't let grass grow beneath our feet, and we're getting ready for the next legislative session. And so I continue to keep my finger on the pulse there and participate on a regular basis with the legislative efforts of TAC. Secondly, the following day was an event here at the, at the fairgrounds, at the Richard Borchard Fairgrounds in Robstown on the 21st. It was the College Two, it's Community College Connection Career Expo. It's a mouthful. And thanks to the team for putting that together. I turned it into date night and took my wife with me, and it worked out really well, because I'll tell you, she got in that cosmetology booth, and they put those little stringy things in her hair, and she got a little bling. It was a lot of fun. But we walked around, and it was well-attended, not only by our staff and faculty members, but by employers as well. I understand there was interviews on the site, onsite and so forth. So great night. Thanks to all participants who put that together. And contrary to the rumor, I did not take my wife to Whataburger on our date night to finish up the night. Nothing wrong with it. It was just a running joke as we were walking around and so forth. But it was, it was a great night. And thanks to all who participated on that, and look forward to seeing the replication of that in other areas, as I understand, other parts of the service area. Getting a nod there from Vice President Patricia. So thank you for that. On the 27th and 28th, the Texas Center, Texas Success Centers Board of Trustees Institute, with which we'll talk about here a little bit more, was underway in Lakeway, and I participated in that. I will not steal the chair's thunder, but I was there. And it was another, a great example, I think, well, no, I know, Regent Babaly was with us. And also took in just a great conference put on by, by the Success Centers staff for the trustees and regents throughout the state. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Dr. Eskamia? Thank you, Dr. Eskamia.
Yes, ma'am.
Under Regents' Report, Dr. Babaly and I were able to attend the Board of Trustees Institute. And I think at this point, everybody on the, on the Board of Regents has attended at least one Board of Trustees Institute. Is that correct? You haven't been able to attend yet, Laurie? Okay. And Carl has not. So we gotta work on those two for next year. So the Texas Success Center invites two regents and the CEO at no cost to attend the Board of Trustees Institute. They pay for the hotel and for the registration fee. You just gotta get yourself there. So I'm pleased that Dr. Babaly was able to join this year. He gave you a written report that Delia passed out, and you have at your spot since he couldn't be with us today. Dr. Eskamia and I did talk about the strategic planning process. We had a presentation on the strategic planning process in the midst of changes related to House Bill 8. And I appreciated the opportunity to talk about our work in progress. We by no means are experts in the field, and there are quite a few colleges who follow a similar process to what we do in strategic planning. But to be able to talk about the conversations and what we were looking at from, and how House Bill 8 is gonna impact that, and the need for data in that process. So as you know, the Board of Trustees Institute is really all about using data-informed decisions and looking at data as an undercurrent. The session that I wanted to share with you that I felt was most impactful was one of the plenary sessions. And the College Excellence Program out of the Aspen Institute made a presentation on the role of the Board of Trustees in looking at post-completion outcomes. So there was, Josh Weiner is the Executive Director of the College Excellence Program for Aspen, and they're, they're the ones who provide the Aspen Award every other year that several Texas colleges have been recognized for recently. So the reason I want to share with you, I think, and I shared this with Dr. Eskamia, they actually have a board retreat, a board training framework, and a board policy framework to look at when thinking about what they're calling 3.0 colleges. And so we have gone from, from access to persistence and completion, and now really thinking about post-completion success. So yes, they're finishing with a degree or certificate, but what does that degree or certificate get them? And so the opportunity to begin talking at the board table about not just finishing, what, finishing is very important. You can't, you can't go to the next step if you don't finish your degree or certificate program. program. But then what happens in, in that student's life? And are they actually being able to support a family, support career choices, transfer, do, complete the act, excuse me, not complete, but have the post-completion outcomes that they desire when entering the program? And so the conversations and what the board needs to look, look like, look, look at and begin to talk about in that 3.0 college. So I'm thinking it might be a great opportunity for us to, to think about that from a training standpoint in the future and potentially look at what the College Excellence Program has to offer in terms of resources we might be able to apply in our work. I think, I'm going to ask Dr. Babaly, he actually got a clean copy of the little worksheet that they gave us, so I'm going to see if he would PDF that for me and, and have a clean copy to share with all of you. So appreciate the opportunity to attend the Board of Trustees Institute. There's no questions, then we will move on to our staff reports. And Mr. Garcia is going to come forward and lead a discussion on property tax assessments and collections. Do you have any introductory comments, Dr. Eskemia?
I do, Madam Chair. Regents, as Mr. Garcia is preparing to kick off this presentation, as is customary, we, on an annual basis and on this month, bring to your report on tax collections, an activity that is in, at a snapshot in time. And I invite you all to, one, certainly participate in this staff report, but if there are any questions that come to you before, during, or after this presentation, that we will be glad to sit down and refine any data or information that we have or do not have at this moment. I say that because we, as we prepare this presentation, or as we prepared this presentation and as it, as it came forward to this year for your present, for your consideration, albeit a staff report, and understanding, this is an anomalous year, as you might, well, as we all know, as a result of the situation between the appraisal district and, and some entities out in the, in our, in our tax base. I want you to know that, that as Mr. Garcia will, will, will move through this, there, there has been several now, several entities at different stages of the, of the process that have, that have in effect been hung up on, on, on the, what has been heretofore a regular business procedure. We started off with two entities, two of our, two of the largest, if not, they were one and two, the two largest, I should say, entities that experienced a, a hangup, if you will, with, with their evaluations process and so forth, that put the college in a very precarious situation. As time moved forward and most recently, one of those large entities, petrochemical entities, has resolved itself. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as Mr. Garcia goes through. One still remains unresolved. And as a result, we'll, we'll talk about the impending, we'll talk about, to the, to the degree that we can, the impending litigation and the status that we are currently involved in. There's a much smaller, albeit still considerable entity in terms of tax size that is also involved and still has implications on some dollars because of some unresolved tax issues. And as such, the overall, the, the, the impact of the college has been significant and we'll deal, detail the, the ups and downs of, of these processes as we move through this presentation. So I save all this with, with, again, with, with the idea that we're going to inform you all. Again, it's a staff presentation, so that this, any, any and all discussion will be greatly appreciated. And again, this is not the end of the conversation by any means. Much to come. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we continue our budget planning process with today's discussion on property taxes. The college presentation will provide some context around the college's major source of funding. The college will then pivot to a handful of variables that are driving our property tax revenues today. This includes market valuations by sector, regional property tax valuations, tax collection rates, and pending litigation. Please keep in mind that today's information is subject to change from now until August when the colleges, when the college will be ready to submit to the board the 2025 proposed budget. As you recall from last year, things can turn on a dime, right? Last year, the college had a budget redo seven months into the budget planning process. This was caused by property valuation lawsuits from major petrochemical industries, industries in our district. The college was prepared to propose a $118 million budget, but because of this downturn in the law, because of the lawsuits, we did see a downturn, downturn in property revenues, adding pressures from the lawsuits. This downward pressure resulted in a changed budget down to, or a reduction down to $115.2 million. So you can see the magnitude of those lawsuits. Okay, so let's get started on the next slide. So we have discussed this slide in length at our last two board meetings when we addressed the tuition and fees. With today's focus on property taxes, I just wanted to point out, like many Texas public community colleges, Delmar's financial stability, financial stability is heavily dependent on property tax revenues. For fiscal year 2023, property taxes provided nearly $66 million, that figure on the bottom in blue, of the combined total of our three major funding streams valued at $102.1 million. So property taxes is fueled by valuations of our local property tax base. As you may know, property valuations are very sensitive to pending valuation, valuation litigations, as we've learned from last year, changes in property valuation models, as we learned from last year, and economic conditions. We will next go over a few related data points beginning on the next slide if there are no questions. All right, so in recent years, the Federal Reserve has been increasing interest rates as a strategy to rein in the rate of inflation to around 2%. This has driven up the cost of finance for single-family homes. The reported 30-year fixed mortgage rate by Freddie Mac scaled up as of December 31st, 2023, to a high of 6.1, 6.61% from the reported December 2020, three years ago, low of 2.6%. Based on these four data.
I think you're on, your script is for your next slide.
I did it again, didn't I? My deepest apologies. All right, here we go. All right. So based on the 2023 appraised values in our district, the college is heavily dependent on single-family homes, which accounts for 43% of our $41 billion in total property valuations. It is nearly twice the value of industry and commercial with valuations of 9.1 million and 8.4, 9.1 billion and 8.4 billion respectively. Single-family homes is one of the few asset categories that performed very well during the pandemic. Since 2019, valuations for single-family homes have been in an upward trajectory, reaching an all-time high of $17.8 billion in 2023, representing an increase of 36% for the five-year period reported. What is not certain is if this upward trend will continue in the near future. This could depend in part on interest rate changes that may be introduced by the Fed as they continue to control the rate of inflation. The next slide illustrates the impact of recent interest increases by the Feds on our region's single-family housing activity. Are there any questions on this slide? Okay.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Is that, so is that taxable value or is that actual, like the?
Taxable valuations. Yes, sir.
So that's, if we give a homestead exemption, that's after the?
That's after the homestead exemption. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I guess the question I have is the jump, the jump between 2022, single-family valuation and 2023, do we attribute that to valuation increases or to new builds? I realize it's a combination of both, but do you know if it's weighing more heavily on one side of that or the other?
Yes, so we will shortly cover the permit history. I can tell you, there has been, there has been a reduced level of new permits issued by the city. That would suggest to me that this value, this increase is predominantly based on new valuations. Yes? Any other questions?
So if you're, if you're homesteaded, you're capped at a 10% increase. So that, that's including a 10% increase on the, on the homestead houses?
So, yes. So it is based on the maximum taxable value, which I think you're citing the state statute that says you can't tax anything above 10%, any increase year over year on properties above 10%.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, so I mean, there's clearly either a bunch of new value, because I mean, 10% doesn't, you know, they're either, the non-homesteaded stuff's going up a whole lot. You know, if everything's, if everything that's homesteaded goes up 10%, that's like 60%.
Yes.
In order to get that big of a jump, you still have to have everybody else go up a lot and have a bunch of new value added, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, transitioning. All right, so here's the index that I was talking about earlier. So in there you have four data points and I compare the, those different unique data points for family housing homes related to the Freddie Mac and what the increase in the Freddie Mac interest rates relative to that activity in our industry. So based on our four data points on this slide, it appears that the increasing financing cost has resulted in a reduced level of activity for single-family homes in our region. The year to, year to sales, the dollar value sales, the new listing, the new single-family, all those four index six, index Cs is trending downward ever since you saw, we are experiencing an increase in the Freddie Mac interest rates. This suggests a slowdown of activity during the same period as financing costs Freddie Mac started to scale up. Despite the slowdown in activity, the property valuations, as pointed out by Mr. Loeb, continued to be resilient, reaching a high in 2023 to $41 billion, as discussed in the previous slide. So the, this impact in the interest rate is not significantly enough to impact valuations at this point in time. What is not certain today is if the cost of financing will continue to scale up in the near future and the financial implications it may have on our region's real estate activity and property valuations. The college will continue to monitor and will keep you apprised of any significant changes. Are there any questions on this slide? Okay. So in 1987, the CEO of Volvo once said, cash is king. Next, we'll go over trending property tax collections on the next slide. All right. So the business office monitors the property tax collection activity throughout the year to identify any unusual trends that may have a material effect on our revenues, property tax revenues. So for the five months, the activity listed on this report, for the five months ending January of this year, the college has collected 67% of the taxed assessed valuations. This is relatively consistent with the preceding years of 69%. It's trending a little bit low. We're thinking it's probably timing differences in the collections. We'll, we'll know a little bit more in the months of February and March. I will point out too, the largest decline occurred in collection activity for the same period occurred from 2022 to 2023. This is attributed in part to the downward pressures that we have been discussing over the last couple of months from the certain petrochemical companies that are contesting their valuations. And that's why you see that big drop right there. One last point, as our president mentioned earlier, one of the two lawsuits between Nuessa's Tax Assessor's Office and Flint Hills Refinery recently settled on the property tax valuations to a valuation nearing $1.5 billion. I can tell you, the full payment was made to our tax collection agency, tax, tax collectors on January. The college is estimating that with this windfall, that we will experience an additional $800,000 in property tax revenues for this year. Are there any questions on this slide?
Not, not really related to this slide, but what is the overall annual collection? Is, I mean, this seems to be kind of low, I mean, for five, the five months, in any, any January, I mean, all the taxes are due at the end of January without penalty. So it would seem to me like this is most of what we're going to get.
Nope. I can tell you, we are already looking at some data for the month of February and March and we are still seeing some collection activity. And I can tell you, at this time, five months, I can tell you, 2018, 2020, 2021, 2023, 2024 is within that 67, 69% range. I can also tell you that at the end of all these years, we've collected the full value of the planned budget.
That was basically my question.
Yes. Good. Any other questions?
So is the 67% include the settlement or doesn't include the settlement?
It includes the $1.5 billion settlement, which translates for us about $800,000 in, in new tax revenue dollars. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Wait, I want to understand, so your 2024 number through the end of January included that $800,000 number? Okay.
Yes, yes.
My question is related to that $800,000. So that just shows up as a lump sum payment in our current collectibles, but that's over what we would have expected for any one year.
Yes, ma'am.
So will you show a segregation between what was expected for the 2024 collection and what is actually previous year collections?
I, I think we can work on that reporting, yes. Yes, we could. Yes. I'll put that on my notes to do.
Because I would think it would be important for us to understand
Yes.
what is normal year collection and what is, what is previous year and, and what we, how we use that money.
And that absolutely makes sense. You want to understand what is the anomaly from one year to the next and what is the plan for those additional revenue dollars? And that makes sense, of course.
Any other questions on this slide? Welcome, Mr. Kelly.
So, so without that $800,000, that number, that percentage would be significantly less or just lower?
You know, we're talking about millions of dollars. $800,000, my wife would be excited, but I don't know if Delmar College would be excited, you know? And I'm sorry, I don't have an exact figure to tell you.
No, that's okay.
But your, but your question and your, the intuition with which you bring it is, is on, it's, but relatively speaking, it's, it's impactful to the overall M&amp;O aspect of our operation. But in terms of programming, when you start disaggregating the dollars, but as a whole, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a small percentage.
Yeah.
One thing I'd like to ask is, my understanding is that the number of appeals and the number of lawsuits has gone up significantly over time and that ends up driving this data. So in this report, can we start getting the, you know, the appeals and then how many ongoing suits they have that we can, you know?
Yeah.
Keep track of that, because that will affect, that's kind of a leading indicator of how these are going to end up looking every year. And that's important for us planning our budget. our budget.
Oh, that's a, that's a great idea. I can tell you, I've been here five years, and I can tell you, Texas has a wealth of information that's out there, and I've lost a lot of sleep just trying to navigate through the different sources. I just got to figure out how to get my arms around that information. I'm sure it's out there, but yes, that would make sense.
I think Augie got some, I think Augie got that for previously,
Oh, okay, okay, good.
so he can tell you how to get it.
Right across the hall. We got it.
Got it. All right, perfect.
I think, because of what we're, probably where we're circling in on this is when, as we continue our budget discussions and you come back and you're making assumptions on what the fiscal year '25 property tax valuations and tax rate would be, we're probably going to have a lot of questions around your assumptions on property tax valuations. And so we probably need to make sure that we've spent a lot of time really understanding the input into those assumptions
Of course.
so that we have, have some clarity there.
Would warrant, or I think it would be worthy of a, of a separate staff report as we prepare and move into the budget outside and apart from the budgeting process to, to handle those because of the anomalous situation that we're in, situations that we're in. There's so many facets to that statement right there that I think we can brainstorm an agenda that would be, that would be really worth our time together and this, this Board of Regents' time to, to resolve those and get those understood outside and apart from the bigger and broader budgetary process.
Okay.
65% of our budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, of course.
We've got to put the work in, so. Kathy, Jackie, I know you're all, are all ears back there. I see you fidgeting with your hands entirely. So Mr. Johnson was unable to be here with us due to an illness, so, but he would have been here.
Okay.
Sorry, you got one more slide.
Any other questions? Okay, all right. So here we go. So we started the year, as mentioned earlier, with two pending litigations and petrochemical industries contesting their property valuations, which added downward pressures in our property tax revenues. The college estimate for the Valero taxable valuation for the, the case that's not been settled, we're anticipating, a rough estimate, $1.4 billion for an increase of $779,000 relative to the prior year's taxable valuation. As reported by the Tax Collection Office, there has been very little tax collection activity on this increased valuation. What is not certain today is the outcome of the existing litigation to determine the final monetary impact to the college. The college will continue to monitor this activity as we continue to build the budget plan, and you will see new updates in, in future tax revenue reporting to the board. Madam Chair, if there are no questions, this concludes the presentation.
I think Mr. Kelly has a question.
All right, and that's an interesting point. If and when the, this litigation is resolved either by settlement or trial, and it does result in additional tax revenue to the college, what is the reasonable expectation for that collection? Do we know?
I'm trying to, if I understand the question, what suggests to me is that, number one, Flint Hill is financially stable to, to manage, I would think Flint Hill is financially stable to manage the outcome of, of this litigation.
And it's probably a factor they're considering, so our anticipation is that, once it's settled, we're going to get a check.
Yes. If we could, if I may jump in there, Mr. Garcia, if I use the example of what just is occurring as we are sitting here today, that, that, in fact, with another entity of comparable size and so forth, is the case. The resolution was made, the, 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 where papers were signed, and I received a call last week from the appraisal district saying invoices are out, checks are on their way.
Fantastic, okay.
Sir.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. That concludes the presentation.
Just, just as a quick recap, we've made notes where, when you see my head down in my phone, I'm texting the team and making, making notes for a deeper, and I dare say a broader dive, a deeper dive anyway, into the, into the tax collections operations for the college and as it, as it impacts our budgets. And I'm going to shoot, we're going to shoot for me on this one. So the texts are out, and so stay tuned. Look forward to the conversation.
Just one other comment. Based on what I'm seeing in the marketplace is the single-family home starts is going to be down considerably this year. I just, there's no activity at all that I can see out there, very little.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Natalie Villarreal is going to take us through our current strategic plan. Natalie, you've been very proud of Mark and I at, Dr. Escamea and I at the BOTI. We were very clear on our current strategic plan versus our, our current strategic planning process for the next strategic plan. We got tongue-tied a couple of times.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The two trains, as we talked about it a few months ago. Dr. Escamea, Madam Chair, Regents, what I'd like to do is go over today, Goals Three and Four of the current strategic plan, brief discussion on the planning timeline, and then give you an update on what's happening with the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Strategic Plan. We've been busy, so I think you get to see me at least once a month or every other month regarding their current plan or the future plan. So as you can see by the green checkmark since October, we've been focusing on giving you the updates on this final tranche of data for the current plan. So we've talked about completion in December, we talked about recruitment and persistence, and now we're going into Goals Three and Four, which is our academic preparedness and student learning and our learning environments. This timeline will take us through August, when we will wrap up this plan, give an overview of what we've learned, what we know to do for the next plan, and then continue on with our '24 to '29 plan. So getting right into Goal Three of the current plan, which is aspire, engage, achieve. When the college put this plan together and looking at academic preparedness and student learning, we looked at how do we accelerate student attainment of academic preparedness and ensure optimal levels of learning in all instructional delivery format? So the KPIs that the college decided to evaluate ourselves on, really were focused on developmental education coursework. So if you look at these four areas, you can see we're looking at the percentage of students who are coming into the college requiring developmental education coursework, students who are academically unprepared, and whether or not they're able to satisfy TSI requirements or complete a college-credit course within two years. But we also decided to look at completion rates with the different modalities that we use in instruction. So the number one question for this goal was, does DMC decrease the number of students who are requiring developmental coursework? We can't really talk about that without mentioning the TSI or the TSIA II. I believe this came up in the last board meeting about exactly what the test assesses. The purpose of this test is to help determine whether students are ready for that entry-level college coursework in three specific areas of reading, writing, and mathematics. Now, a student can be exempt from the TSI assessment if they obtain a certain score on their ACT or SAT exams, if they complete a college-level preparatory course, or if you earn a certain level on your STAR exam at the end of the year. Also, our veterans, our active-duty personnel, and members of reserve, the reserve component in the US Armed, US Armed Services are also exempt. So if a student does not meet any of those exemptions, and they do not meet one or more of the established benchmarks of the TSIA, then they are required to participate in the developmental education courses.
Just, this is, let me just jump in there, Dr. Natalie, if I may. And remember, that's why so many of our students do not take the ACT or SAT. Community college students use this, and as they transfer and so forth, so, so, just, just, it's a little tidbit over the years that, that people say, well, why don't they take their ACT or their SAT? They might. They very well might, but they don't have to.
They don't have to, correct. So looking at KPI for Goal Three, we focused on our full-time and credit students requiring developmental coursework. Now, the number of what we call the FTIC college student in the fall '22 was about 822 students. So out of those students, 70% came in with no exemptions, and after taking the TSI that we just talked about, required developmental course. So for Delmar College, we had set a threshold of trying to at least get to 66% of our students entering not needing to take developmental education coursework. We did not meet that threshold, and the target for 2024, we have not been able to meet as well. This, I believe, is one of those goals that we are going to continue to talk about because we are talking about students who enter into the college, and there's a lot of opportunities that we do work with the high schools to get those students ready, but up to a certain point, once they get here, we really have to do what we can to support them.
The other thing too is the TISA II.
Yes.
Right, did I say that right?
TSIA II.
Just keeps getting longer. Is dramatically, well, let me see, I should look at the scientific, significantly more rigorous than the TSI. As a, as a, as a K through 12 instructor, professor, teacher, and, and parent, as many of us are, we understand that. The state understands that, okay, to be the case. That is not just a localized piece of lore or anything like that. When TSIA II, just as its name got more complicated, so did everything else. I'm getting the nods out there from the pros and the people within the trenches with our students and faculty members and so forth. So I just have to add that. That has been the case. They didn't, they, they thought that that would be the case when it was launched, and when it hit us, and hit our, hit the streets, if you will, it proved out to be.
Go back to that previous slide. David has a question.
Okay.
It's just a comment, is that I, this is one of those ones that I don't really like out of the current plan, because, I mean, there's a little bit we can do by, through dual credit and altering it, but, I mean, we shouldn't be, we want people who need to be prepared more for college to come to us so we can prepare them. And, and this tends to like, say, well, either we, we need to discourage those students from coming here, or we need to actively recruit students who have a higher level of readiness over, and I think our role is to take everybody.
You're exactly right. And this, this KPI here, again, speaks to a plan that was, an evolutionary part of the college. It was, it was evolving towards it, but, but you're exactly right. We say this, and we're focused on this, and we're doing this, yet we're doing the same thing that you're talking about at the same time. We're trying to recruit all of those students through the access points, every access point into the, into the developmental ranks. This is really more a KPI that's built towards moving that needle to those matriculating.
You want this information so you can look at the next information, and I, and I accept that. So I mean, I think just in the new one, we need to go through and say, okay, what, what is a performance indicator that we can affect, and what is just tracking data so we know in reading the other ones, the context of which that number is presented?
These are the kinds of things that Chair Scott and I talked about at the presentation. It was these kinds of moments right here, if I'm not, if I'm mistaken, Chair Scott, this, this is exactly the point of transition that the college is in, so that we can not be, well, so that we can be more purposeful with our next plan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Regent Loeb.
Dr. Turner? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. Dr. Turner had a question.
No, so for high schools who have these classes, I mean, I think it's, and these are non-dual credit kids, these are
Correct.
seniors and seniors who are taking these college prep courses for English and math, and I think it's important that they continue these programs, but I also think it's important to keep track of our data just for the type of instructions and instructors that are needed, and to just kind of have a basic understanding of our community, because the people who are requiring developmental coursework, these are not high school students, these are adult learners.
It can be, I believe it can be a little bit of both, and I think you bring up a really interesting point, and, and already the evolution of the next plan. So if you look at Goals Three and Four, you notice that it's a snippet of who our students are. And so for the, for the entire five years, our real, our real focus was on that credit student. And so as we continue to move, and you'll see the draft of the plan next month in April, you'll get to see that we are going to be focusing on all different types of students here at the college. So we did include CE later, as the, as the plan was revised after about two or three years, but we haven't been able to really collect the data as we had hoped to over the five years, so. Any more questions? So for KPI Two, we looked at the underprepared students who satisfied the TSI requirement in two years. So what does that mean? If you're a student and you come in as a devet student, what does that mean that you satisfy the TSI requirement within two years of being here? So a couple examples is, you can test again. You can, right after you take the first test and you get enrolled in courses, you could at any point go back and retest and see if, if you make a higher grade and are able to move up in your coursework. Also, you can take your credit in your dual-enrolled, I'm sorry, in your co-enrolled class. So the model that we follow with the state is co-enrollment, where students take a developmental course concurrently with a credit course at the same time. I believe you all have heard about that from our academic side of the house. And so if you pass that course as well, this student is also considered satisfying their TSI requirement.
That's the co-requisite model that the state employed and brought forth six years ago, eight years ago, somewhere around there. And so this is a model that was not developed locally, where they have a foot in both, quote the credit side and the developmental side. And it's, it's, we've, I think we have mixed reviews? Is that fair to say?
Yes, we have some mixed reviews. I think it's working pretty well in, you know, the students that take INRW classes have taken English 1301, and we've been fairly successful there with a pretty good pass rate. Mathematics is a little bit more difficult, and there are some challenges there when you have a student very low level in mathematics and you're expecting them to complete college algebra or a statistics class at the same time. So there are many challenges there, yes.
I should say mixed results, not mixed reviews. Pardon me, I misspoke.
Oh, yes. I didn't catch that. Okay.
I'm correcting my, I caught myself on that one. I think there's probably mixed reviews, but we won't get into that.
And yes, sir, actually, if you do look at the math for 2022, there was a point change in the number of students who were able to satisfy that math requirement. So there have been some, some positive pieces coming out of the strategies that our academic staff have been working on. We have not been able to do that in reading and writing in the last year. We had a negative point change on that. And so again, these are some of the areas that we continue to focus on.
Another, I think, another problem with this set of data is it's first-time, full-time students.
Yes.
When 78% of our students are part-time.
Yes.
So by definition, what the old Coordinating Board Accountability Measures ask us to measure, and we put some of those same measurements, so we weren't collecting data twice, gives you such a small cohort, this does not, I don't think adequately talk about who our students are.
No, again, it's that snippet that we talk about over and over again. And so the next part of our strategic planning process is meeting with Sashil Palamoni and his team, and really sitting down and talking about for the next plan, what key performance indicators are we going to use that can really give us a more comprehensive measure on, on if we're moving the needle or not in these areas.
Just out of curiosity.
Yes, sir.
In writing, in 2020, it was 63%. It dropped to 23%?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's jumped all over the map. It was 57%, and 38%, 63%, and 27%. It's kind of odd that it's that big of a drop.
There was a significant drop. Dr. Howcomb, do you want to comment on any of that?
I think we're seeing, I'm guessing, we're seeing a COVID influence here. Okay. We see nationally a drop in our success of our students.
Yes.
And I think that's what we're seeing here, but I haven't taken a deep dive in that data to determine it for sure.
The calendar would indicate that. The calendar would indicate that and, and show that the precipitous, precipitous drop, and, and/or any change at that, around the 2020 period is usually a result of the whole world being upside down on its ear. I apologize for the unscientific response and so forth, but, but we are making notes to, to follow up on that, Mr. Crowe, because that, that, that too needs to be, that needs to have a, a firmer response to it, and I'll make sure we do.
And this is definitely an area that has been statewide. The Texas Student Success Center also has a focus on this data as well. So, that's why, five years ago, when this plan was being drafted, this was included in the data.
So, just to confirm, though, we've got about 20,000 students. Half of them are CE, so that's not this. Then, the other half are 80% part-time, so that's not this. So, now we're down to 2,000, and then 70% are unprepared, so we're down to 12,000 to 1,300. So, you know, 100 people will swing this wildly. Okay.
Good breakdown. That's a good computer you got there.
Faster than mine. Thank you, Regent Loeb.
They, they play, I got, I got, I got a high enough SAT score where I placed out of college math, so I didn't have to take calculus, thank God.
So, in KPI Three, when we're looking at students completing a college-level course in two years, in math and reading, there were more students who completed that college-level course. And again, these continue to come from our Texas Success Center focus from a few years ago. The fourth and last, the fourth and last KPI for Goal Three was course completion rates. So, this table includes the rates for students enrolled in our credit programs only, but excluding our dual-credit students. So, the following course delivery methods were our face-to-face, online, and hybrid courses, and focuses on students who completed a course where they earned a grade of an A, B, or a C. The D does not, is not counted because it is not transferable. So, if you look at the threshold for our completion rates of our course delivery methods, they all fell within 20% of points of each other, excuse me, that's the threshold. We did meet that threshold. So, that was, we at least wanted to get to that. However, our target for 2024, between the course completion rates wanting to be within five percentage points of each other, that target has not been met. And as you can see right now, the hybrid course delivery method for 2022 is one of the highest. Again, there's a lot of interesting data behind that. For example, a lot of our process technology students use the hybrid model as well. And so, again, the data is skewed a little bit, but it does give us an overall idea of what our course completion rates to look like within our credit student programs.
So, this is one of our more complete sets of data because it includes part-time, both.
Yes.
What we consider traditional academic programs as well as our workforce programs. So, this is really one of our better all-student metrics that we have.
Within the credit side, yes, ma'am.
Right.
Still on one, one big side.
Right.
So, that wraps up Goal Three. Goal Four, we decided to focus on learning environment, environment. So, providing engaging, effective, and student-ready environments with accomplished and qualified personnel that facilitate learning and productivity. So, the three areas that the committee focused on was our average state compensation rates in comparison to how we do, compared to state versus Delmar College, the annual safety and security report under the CLARI Act, and then our Viking scheduler space utilization. So, we use the following measures, again, to measure if we are providing engaging, effective, and student-ready environments. In October, you usually receive that report from VP McDonald and, excuse me, and Chief of Police Lauren White regarding safety within our college campuses here. And so, that, that data will be ready in early October, and so you should be receiving the CLARI report again at the end of the, at the end of the month. According to the TCC TA Faculty Survey, Delmar currently ranks eighth in faculty pay with an average salary of over $70,000. That does not include the stipends that many of our faculty members also receive. Between 2017 and 2022, we, we usually go from ranking fifth to eighth, so we stay pretty much in the top 10 the last few years.
We, we had been at five for a considerable period of time, and then going to number eight was in recent years. I mean, I want to say the past two, two years.
Actually, instead of 22, that was actually published last November, so it'd be 23.
Yeah.
So, it's FY '24, but it was, it actually gets published around November of '23. So, it should be 23.
Little year variance there. Still very recent.
So, going back now to the strategies, we've talked about all the goals and the key performance indicators that the college has been looking at, but what does the college do day-to-day to try to ensure that we are making the support, the learning environments for our students so that they can be successful? So, what we have is called the DECT Committee. That's one of the strategies that came about, which is the Developmental Education Committee. That's comprised of faculty, department chairs, and deans who meet monthly and really go over the data and start to focus on what is happening with our developmental education students, what does the data look like, and what can we be doing at the curriculum level, and currently at the advising level to ensure that we are moving our students forward. Learning supports and academic preparedness. Thanks to our strategic plan for the last 10 years and what has been budgeted within our physical facilities, we have a new renovation happening in our library on Heritage Campus, which is going to really enhance some of those supports. You heard about the Stone Writing Center earlier. And, and then also, we've got our beautiful new campus at Oso Creek with that library as well. We continue to work hard with our partnerships within the ISDs. You'll see people such as Dr. DiVetta on our continuing education side and our dual enrollment, and then along with our deans working on the academic credit side in the dual enrollment courses with CE, with credit, really trying, again, to get our students prepared, our students in the community. So, whether they come to Delmar College or they decide to go elsewhere, they are prepared to move forward. So, after all of that dataset, what does that mean? Did we prepare our students to move forward? So, we know that 70% of our first-time-in-college students do require developmental coursework. We know 11% of that was an increase in our FTI students who were able to satisfy their TSI math requirement within those two years. So, we did see something positive there. Our underprepared students completed higher numbers of math and reading courses within two years. But, as we saw in the data, we still have some way to go in terms of what it looks like with our large college cohort and the rest of our community partners in the, community college partners in the state. Yes, ma'am?
So, if they're taking developmental coursework, doesn't, do they still have to take the TSI A, or do their grades count towards just continuing on with college algebra and college English?
If they pass certain credit courses, yes, they can move forward.
Without taking the test, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Okay. Do we have any questions on the current plan before we move to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Strategic Plan?
It's not really a question as much as a comment. We've talked about the challenge and the data sets for ad nauseam. So, as we, as we move into the new plan, we've talked about the, the, who are our students, and we don't have one student. So, who are the big buckets? Who are the, what are the five student, most, most prolific student profiles? And what, how do we disaggregate this data so that we understand where these groups of students are moving through? What are their majors? What are their supports needed? What are their, how are they starting with us? What, what's their age when they're starting? You know, how, how are we starting to determine these buckets of students, and then the, the systemic supports needed to move those students to completion?
Absolutely. And I think you're going to be really excited. Next month, you're going to have a presentation from myself, not that that's so exciting, but, but Jeff Olson also with marketing, and Patricia Benavides Dominguez also with our Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, to talk about all those, how all these areas are converging so that we can start really looking at those details, but we're all working simultaneously.
It'll be a workshop. We're proposing a workshop, I think, if I'm not mistaken. Am I making things up?
Nope, you're not making things up.
I want to make sure I wasn't getting a nod. I wasn't sure. But, so, so that's going to be important because now, it, it took, it took other efforts. It, it took bigger, broader statewide efforts to change the categories of students, and we did. You got, you begin with the definitions, i.e. the buckets, if you will, and then you start breaking down those subsets as it relates to our operations on campus, and then you tie those all back to our, to our new goals and new strategies and so forth. So, so now that the definition has changed, and I've seen them, and they're broken down basically into 17 different metrics, I think that'll be the second.
I don't want 17 buckets.
No, I know. I was going to say, you won't get the 17 buckets. You'll get the, you'll get the four or five big buckets of the profiles of students, and then we'll begin breaking them down. But, it'll be important for you all to see the 17 metrics as it relates to the new ways of, the new definitions of the state. We'll, we'll get there.
Absolutely, yes. Dr. Sambi and I are already working on ensuring that those 17 metrics are part of the KPIs in the next plan. So, you'll get to see that. In June, you'll get to see the final draft of the plan with the key performance indicators as well.
And Sushil's already got versions of dashboard mechanisms to, to show you all the data sets coming forth in a condensed version for those 17 metrics.
Thank you. Dr. Eskimia. So, moving on with the strategic plan for the state, excuse me. The board is used to receiving a yearly report on a larger scale with the data regarding the strategic plan. Now, Talent Strong Texas came out, was kind of the revised version of the plan, and then the legislature and the Coordinating Board really started to focus on House Bill Eight. And so, right now, what you're hearing is a lot of different listening tours, workshops, and meetings regarding, on those metrics. So, the Coordinating Board is really busy with that right now. So, we don't have a full extensive dataset or presentation on that. However, we do have our own internal data that Sushil and his team provide, so we wanted to share that with you briefly. Goal One of the Coordinating Board Plan is attainment of post-secondary credentials. And for our target at the college, we wanted to incrementally increase over, overall post-secondary attainment by 7.6%. That's our status right now. So, we are pleased to say that at the college, we do have an increase in numbers overall. And so, that's really pleasing to kind of step back and see the big picture over the last few years that we are moving forward and getting more students completed. Goal Two, post-secondary credentials of value. You're going to hear a lot about credentials of value over the next few years. That really is where the state is heading in terms of what they want to see, what they're going to reward colleges on, and getting our students in the workforce within those, within those industries. Our DMC target is most graduates will be earning wages in Texas 10 years after graduation. So, that's why, if you look at that total graduate number, we went back to 2008 and to 2010 to show, out of those graduates with their associate's degrees and their certificates, 10 years later, those are the number of graduates that are earning wages in Texas. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I, I have a question or a comment. So, total graduates, that's two years.
That would have been academic year '08, '09, and then '09, '10.
Okay.
Yes.
So, 740 associates per year on average, 150 certificates on average?
Yes.
Go back a slide. Look at the difference. So, I, I think we spend a lot of time looking at very short-term data, but that, I mean, that's a 73% increase in associates' degrees awarded per year and a 257% increase in certificates. That's a huge increase when our, our student population and our regional population has not increased that much. So, I, I just want to say that, that, that's a buried story that we need to do a better job telling about over the last 15 years, how many more people have gotten a degree from here or a certificate from here.
Absolutely, and thank you for acknowledging that. I think sometimes when we're living this day-to-day, we're always trying to focus on how to get better in all the areas that we need to fix, and sometimes celebrating our wins is something that we fail to do. So, I appreciate you mentioning that.
Because I, I was just going through when I was doing the packet. I mean, that was my one question this week.
Yes.
To Mark was, I was like, is this, did I read these right? Because it's not put together, I mean, it's, and if it had been separated, I probably wouldn't have caught it. But, I mean, that's a very significant increase over a fairly short period of time. So, yeah, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Goal Three, under Research, Development, and Innovation, I wanted to add it on here because it is a major goal for the state. However, it's not anything that applies directly to our two-year community colleges. So, you've already begun transitioning into the new line of thought, that paradigm shift with House Bill Eight and where the state is taking community colleges. So, I just wanted to add this slide as a reminder of where we're at with our performance tier funding, right? It is going to align with building a Talent Strong Texas. The state, the Coordinating Board have made sure that everything continues to be in alignment. So, as you begin to hear the draft of the plan, you're going to continue hearing, again, about building a Talent Strong Texas and where we stand with our data. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question, but leading into the workshop next month, so, the performance measures, the 17 metrics are in final comment period, and we expect to be adopted.
Most of those are already being implemented. There's some final touches on those, and there'll be some more next year. So, it could be 18. It could be subsets of the 17, depending on how the rules-making comes out and, and further conversations. But, by and large, there's 17 that should be the basis for future.
So, in, in Mark's and my conversations about, about the strategic planning process, I think it's important that we spend the time in a workshop to understand those state metrics because they are so new, and as opposed to us learning them over the next couple of years at various, you know, state workshops or BOTIs or whatever we might be able to attend, if we can all hear the same information at the same time and have a common understanding of those state metrics, I think it's going to be important. Obviously, it's a lot of detail that staff is responsible for, but we need to understand those overarching, those overarching principles and, and what we're, on how we're going to be, how the state funding is going to be allocated based on these metrics. So.
Absolutely.
Big understanding on our revenue on property tax coming up, but big understanding on state, on the state appropriations and how those appropriations will be, will be allocated is going to be important for us.
We, we have a equal and opposite, I dare say, process underway. We've had several staff meetings, and the last one I attended with about 25 or 30 of the college administrative academic leaders here at the college to talk about how we're doing that internally, because it's still a big secret internally, so to speak. And we're still unraveling those, those, those metrics within the college as well. We still have to get it in the hands of the faculty and into the departments and to the individual level, level. And so, as such, just know that we're, we're pushing this for, for absorption and, and.
Yes.
Preparing to use it internally as well. We think, and I told the team, I talked, when I talked to the team, I said, we're going to take this to the Board of Regents very soon. So, get ready. We are going to do our best to package it at a high-level overview with background detail so that we can make the most of whatever precious few hours we have together. So, unless you've got other, we'll spend as much time with this as, as we can, but that's going to be the basic approach. High-level, very, but not, not, not so condensed that you, that it's too high-level. But, that's the plan.
Any other questions for Natalie?
Thank you so much for your time. So, I look forward to seeing you in April to talk about the future plan. And I do want to give thanks to my colleagues, Sushil Palamoni and his team, because the data that you see there, our internal data that we use to make decisions every day, our data to the state, all comes from his team, and they work very hard ensuring that we have the proper information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Natalie, for sticking this one out. I know you've been under the weather, and you're, you're here for this presentation. Time to go home and get back on the couch or whatever. Go get off your feet anyway.
All right. Moving on into our pending business, we've got a pending business list in your packet. So, we're have, next month, the strategic planning workshop we just talked about, quarterly investment reports, internal audit report, and we're going to talk about our policy review schedule. Just had that in front of us on a regular basis. Any questions on our pending item list? Any questions on our pending item list? Moving on to our consent agenda, we have two items in our consent agenda, approval of minutes and acceptance of financials. Is there a reason to pull any of those items for separate consideration? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So, ma'am.
Make a motion by Dr. Adame, second by Mr. Loeb. Any discussion on that? Is there any public comment on our consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our regular agenda, we're going to have an opportunity to talk about the annexation of London ISD property. And we do have a special guest with us, Dr. Eskamia.
Dr. Judy Whitis is our superintendent for London ISD, and I want to thank her for sitting through the entire board meeting. As she chose to, we gave her the option.
She's happy to be able to sit in the audience and not be answering questions.
She says, "I get to watch you in the hot seat, Mark." No, that's...
Several of the same conversations, things that we share, and I appreciate that this agenda items is goal five, community partnerships, and even outside of what we are here to talk about, we love the partnership. Thank you for what you do for our kids at London. I've been there five years, and it has grown. There's a lot more to do with regard to the dual credit and all of that, and everything you've talked about this afternoon. In my very distant past, I was a developmental instructor. And so all of this, I taught elementary during the day.
Full circle, yeah.
And I taught reading to adults at night. So, anyway, it's been a pleasure being with you this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Judy, for being here.
Well, we're gonna let John make the presentation, and then if you have any questions, we're glad that you're here.
The City of Corpus Christi annexes property, and so in accordance with the Texas Education Code, Section 130.066, automatic annexation of certain territory. As the City of Corpus Christi annexes property, Delmar College may also annex the property. On February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the City of Corpus Christi passed a written ordinance annexing an eighty-two-point-four acres of land, per the owner petition, located the northwest corner of FM forty-three Weber Road and London Pirate Road, formerly County Road thirty-three. Subject property is currently used as grades kindergarten through twelfth-grade public school facility by the London School District. So we're recommending proceed with this annexation.
Are there any questions about the annexation process? These questions about the proposal before us today? Is there a motion to adopt the annexation?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Second by Mr. Cruel, to annex the property as presented. Any other comments? Any public comment? Again, thank you for sitting through the whole meeting, but we're...
I just welcome you. We are quick growth out there. In the five years I've been there, it's been about thirty-five percent. We are a year-round school, and so our sights are set on starting in July. We're just below eighteen hundred kiddos right now, and so growth is steady. And it's mostly rooftops, so as you were talking about other things, we're mostly rooftops right now, commercial in the future. And so, it is a very, very busy place. We're doing about sixty million right now in bond projects with more to come. And so, if you're out that way, look me up. I would love to give you a tour and show you the great things that are happening, and so.
If I may add, Dr. Judy, and while we're here, this is an historic thing for the Delmar College District. When I speak with those terms, we're talking the bigger, broader footprint of the college. This is the sixth school district to fall in the actual district, in the taxing district and so forth. Now, it's a school district, and we get it, but the fact that we go from five school districts to six is a big, big deal. And the way it happened couldn't be more lovely, I might add, because when you have this kind of foresight and leadership and moving their district forward with Dr. Whitis' leadership and the Board of Trustees and so forth, that's a big, big deal. And when it happens like this, we should consider ourselves privileged.
Carl, I'll get you in just a second. I do want, I think I'm preempting Regent Cruel in what I think his question or comment might be, but we have had the discussion at the board table as we have annexed individual properties in the London ISD jurisdiction, that at some point in time, there's going to be real confusion on behalf of your students and families on who is in the Delmar taxing district and who isn't.
Exactly.
And so, we are concerned about how to approach that. As you continue conversations with leadership and your parents and your property owners, we would certainly love to work with you to help resolve that issue, because it is literally, we are having to look up individual addresses. Is that street grouping or that small subdivision in the taxing district or not? And so, just would appreciate any guidance, help, conversation that you can help lead us with in that regard, because we would love to make it clean for all of your students and their families.
Exactly.
Is that where you're going, Mr. Cruel? Kind of?
Yes. Take it.
Well, and it's been confusing. There was kind of a little bit of hysteria the other day, and it was the way the headline was written, and many of our parents thought that we were being absorbed by CCIIS. Yes, absolutely not. The main objective here is to get us off the septics, and it is a challenge daily to run a school district with over eighteen hundred kids and two hundred staff on a septic. That is our main objective, and yes, clear messaging. And so, with Dr. Eskamia and some things, I think we can help preempt that and have it a win-win for all of us.
This is a significant domino to hopefully bring in the greater fold to the district and so forth. But this was a key move, and thank you for your leadership on this.
Perfect.
Thank you. I didn't see any other public comment. Nope. All those in favor of adoption of the annexation as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for being here.
Congrats on modern plumbing.
Congrats on modern plumbing. All right. As is our practice, every spring, we do a review of the board's ethics requirements. Mr. Rivera will lead us in that shortly. We do have a couple of documents that we're gonna ask each of the regents to sign, which is a statement of ethical conduct, the personal disclosure statement, as well as any, and he'll talk through this abstention affidavit in just a second. But we're gonna allow a few minutes of time to have Mr. Rivera go through our annual ethics update.
Good afternoon, regents. Thank you for the opportunity to go through this with you again. I've gotta say, for what it's worth, well, I hope this never becomes rote for you, but it gives me the opportunity to go out there and brag about you a little bit. The last time was at the coordinating board leadership conference in December, where I was on a panel, and we were talking about effective governance and ethics. And almost without fail, after I give a presentation and I tell them about what you do here, what you've done, and then what you do here, and the extra efforts you make to publicly show your commitment to ethics, I mean, without exception, afterwards, I'll get asked by several trustees or regents from other institutions who'll come up and say, "Can you share the PowerPoint, Augie?" Or, "Can you show us the forms?" Or, one time I even got asked, you know, "Can you send us your bylaws?" Because they're inspired by it. So it's something that I think should be an ongoing conversation just across the board, and I just wanted to publicly applaud you all for doing it. You'll see that, again, this is sort of standard, I mean, more for the sake of posterity, you'll see that we're documenting history here in terms of how it really came about. You've had a couple of ad hoc committees who have, in the past, looked at this. Back in 2012, there was a review of the bylaws and your ethical conduct standards, and there was some revisions made. And then, you know, you can see that we've actually spoken about it for quite a bit at different conferences, both nationally as well as at the state level. In 2021, you'll remember, it's not that long ago, but there was a deep dive done, again, by your subcommittee and the board, where you did actually quite a bit of revision and put in some changes for the better. The ad hoc committee was chaired by Regent Everett and included former Regent Hutchison and Regent Turner. So why are ethics important? Why is it important to conduct a regular review of your ethics rules? Well, the first is, and again, I love this quote from Dr. George Boggs. I don't know if some of you may have met him. Dr. Boggs is the former CEO and president of the American Association of Community Colleges. He had a long and illustrative career in higher ed as a community college president. He's pretty much one of the deans of community college leadership and governance, including ethics. And this is what he says about it. "Leadership in our society is a privilege that enables the leader to impact both organizations and the lives of people, but it also carries many responsibilities. Perhaps the most important for anyone who's in a position of influence is to honor the public trust. Community colleges, for all the good that they do for individuals, exhibit the same types of lapses in ethics that we find throughout society. So why do they continue to occur, and what can be done to strengthen them?" Dr. Boggs answers his own question. "Restoring public confidence can only happen if we begin to make ethical behavior a significant value, especially for leaders in our institutions and organizations." Then he goes on to say, "It's important to think seriously about ethical values before one is faced with difficult and ambiguous dilemmas that are all too common." Before, and that's what you do every year. "Ethic statements do not guarantee ethical behavior, but they do serve to remind leaders that ethical considerations should guide their behavior." I remember, we did this panel back in 2016, and Regent Scott, I think you were on it, it was ACCT in New Orleans. And that's how we got into this, talking about ethics at the national level, put together two panels to present ACCT's annual conference. And the second one, you were on it, and a few others. And afterwards, a gentleman came up to me, and he said, "You know, ACCT used to do more of this, and I wish they would do more." And later, I found out that was Dr. Boggs. I didn't know. Somebody said, "That's George Boggs." So I have a lot of respect for Dr. Boggs and his body of work and his commitment to ethics. So, another reason ethics are important, and this is something that Mr. Olson, I know stays up at night, me too, worrying about, these are the headlines that you can, these are real headlines. "Some of them are oldies, but goodies that have included. College trustees should have known ethics rules, experts say. Board passes censure resolution against a region. Trustees' actions can compromise accreditation. Community college placed on probation. Grand jury expected to urge community college ethics panel." And we've got some new ones in here. "Judge has to remind community college that board trustees are representatives of the public. CC trustee, community college trustees sought college funding for her nonprofit, records show. Trustees deny that campaign finance conflict and a failed vote to renew chancellor's contract. Investigation finds that trustee violated ethics rules. Board issues warning." And finally, "Report finds that two trustees violated ethics rules." So why are headlines, bad headlines, important? Well, first of all, drama gets played out in public view. There's a damage to the functionality and credibility of the board. Diversion, big time of college time, resources, and attention, and there's a damage to the reputation of the college. Deloitte says this about reputational awareness. "In twenty-four-seven news cycle where negative headlines score highly, higher ed institutions have frequently become the target. Schools can lose alumni, business relationships, brand favorability, et cetera. Institutions with reputational awareness and control over their increasingly vast presence in the media can reduce the risk of damaging a reputation that they've spent years building. Benjamin Franklin said, 'It takes many good deeds to build a good reputation, but only one bad one to lose it.'" This is ACCT's guide to ethical governance. They believe that governing boards function best when the standards are clear. And that's why you've spent time doing this, I mean, regularly, and this is why we spend time once a year. You know, certainly if something gets, you know, perked up today, and we're gonna go through a couple of new things to update you, but if there's something new that sparked, you know, that's why we're doing this. It shouldn't be rote, like I say. Of course, it says that all boards should have a set of standards, a code of ethics or standards for good practice, and points out that some regional accreditation bodies do require it. In fact, SAC COC, as Dr. Sambi knows very much, that this is a requirement, that you have to have a board code of ethics. And you do. AGB, the Association of Governing Boards of Universities and Colleges, I keep this in here because they are pretty much the gold standard when it comes to, they're more focused on four years, unfortunately. You know, big institutions, to be a member of AGB, you've got to pay a hefty membership fee. I'm not sure it's worth it for us to do that. You don't see a lot of community colleges. But nevertheless, they have some great materials that are available online, and you'll see that as regents, you should always conduct yourselves with impeccable integrity, acting the institution's best interests, putting it ahead of your personal preferences and political allegiances. Regardless of how you were appointed to the board, as a board member, you do not represent a particular group of constituents. Preemptively, ahead of time, when you can, disclose conflicts, actual and perceived, and dualities of interest. As a member of the board, err on the side of disclosing more rather than less information, and then step aside from voting and sometimes discussions. One of the forms, the personal disclosure form that you are filling out, for example, you're not legally required to do that. But after much deliberation, the committee felt like this was more than just a gesture, that this was actually something that could be valuable. And so that's why you fill out what you fill out, and you disclose it, and we keep it on file. Uphold the highest ethical standards. Model the values, ethics, and morals that the board expects of the administration, the faculty, and the students. One other point that we bring up, and that's the accreditation requirements or principles regarding the governing board, so that you know your role. Every one of you went through this when you first got on the board, and you've heard us talk about this before. But this is important. It's important to Dr. Eskamia, and he stresses this, that the institution's governing board holds in trust the fundamental autonomy and ultimate well-being of the institution. As the corporate body, the board ensures both the presence of viable leadership and strong financial resources to fulfill the institutional mission. Integral to strong governance is the absence of undue influence from external sources. Importantly, this is the specific role of the board as seen by our accreditation body. The governing board ensures a clear and appropriate distinction between the policymaking function of the board and the responsibility of the administration and faculty to administer and implement policy. You folks are responsible for generating policy, providing the college with a vision of which way to go forward, to give that to the CEO, president of the college, and then it's up to the CEO and president of the college through administration and faculty to administer and implement that policy. This is something I know that, again, you all may be familiar with, but Dr. Eskamia and Dr. Sambi and others involved in the accreditation process, this is actually something that institutions get dinged on. They don't have appropriate documentation showing that, you know, that they do this, that they respect this. And many times, they're just plain evidence that trustees or regents have been overstepping their boundaries and getting involved in the day-to-day operations. You'll get on a list if you're not careful. This is something that, you've heard me cite this source before. If you're ever interested, if you're up late at night and you can't go to sleep, there's a wonderful, it's the best that I've ever found. It's a handbook that the Community College League of California has put together for their trustees. There is one, by the way, that Chair Scott had a big hand in helping get off the ground, and that's the CCAT's or CAT's Trustee Handbook. But this has, I mean, the Community College League of California really does a deep dive into ethics, and in one place, you can find in a pretty short section, everything you ever want to know about boards, community college boards, and best practices when it comes to ethics. And this kind of sets it all straight right here. Trustees and governing boards have the responsibility to be both ethical and legal. Both ethical and legal. Ethics are standards of right and wrong, good and bad. Ethics address what one ought to do to fulfill one's moral duty. Being legal just means complying with the laws and regulations that apply. Ethics refers to moral responsibilities and may go beyond legal considerations. Being ethical and legal involves more than understanding what the right thing is to do. It means that one must first perform in ethical and legal ways. One must actively walk, talk. First, one determines what is right and wrong, good or bad, and then one does what is right, good, and required by law. Those are lofty words, but again, you guys have the track record to back it up. Best practices for better ethics, this is based on experiences with you all here. Develop an ethics statement and code of ethics. It spells out your responsibilities and incorporates ethics into the board bylaws. Include a formal process for addressing unethical conduct by a board member and the action that a board is authorized to take. Remember that you cannot remove each other. That's not how you are. You are elected officials under the Texas Election Code. And because of that, you're not allowed to, you know, like cities can, to remove a petition. But you can still address unethical conduct. Review your board bylaws and college policy on a regular basis. Ensure that every new board member is provided with a new member orientation that includes ethics training. Conduct a regular board ethics update, and consider having board members affirmatively recommit themselves to the highest ethical standards. You do that. Address ethical violations swiftly and decisively, and then conduct annual or regular evaluations of the college president and the board. of the college president and the board. So let's go ahead and get into your bylaws. This is the preamble. Last year, I told you, I pointed to the preamble of the U.S. Constitution as, as, again, as an example of what preambles are supposed to do, and that's they set out the, you know, your, your, your objective, your mission, your vision, all in, in one, in one introductory paragraph. There was a lot of work and thought that went into this, and I'm proud of Regent Avery, Regent Turner and Regent Hutchison for taking the time to carefully review this and to make them, I think, words that they, they certainly wanted all of you to respect and honor. But you'll see there that, you know, the, the bylaws provide the operational framework within which the board shall govern and act, as well as the aspirational and legal standards by which each board member shall conduct themselves in the performance of their duties and in representing Delmar College. Importantly, these bylaws include expectations of ethical behavior that are more than what is required by law. Board of Regents acknowledges the profound importance of leading by example, and with these bylaws endeavors to cultivate a culture of exemplary ethics at Delmar College. This is the outline or the, the, the contents of, of your bylaws. You'll see you've got board duties and responsibilities. Two is the statement of conduct and ethics. It covers your email and official communications, social media. Number five is conflicts of interest and prohibited benefits. Number six is regiment misconduct. Seven is board elections and appointments. We're going to be focusing on two and five today. The rest is board member training, the officers, committees of the board, meetings, order of business, public comments and your rules of order. The final minutes of proceedings, rules of decorum, and then how to amend your bylaws. Statement of conduct and ethics. I'm just going to walk you through these without reading it line by line because you have it. The bylaws were provided to you in your packet. I'm sure you have one at your desk or your kitchen table, ready to look at whenever you have a question. That's okay. Even if you don't, you've got my number and I'll get it to you. But you will see that, you know, you've got the following, following standards, and we'll just walk through them. Attend and participate actively in board meetings. Now, I need to put in here, I need to insert that under Texas Education Code, Section 130.0845, that there's actually an attendance requirement. And so, just again, for the sake of me advising you that there is a requirement under law, you have to attend at least 50% or half of the regularly scheduled meetings in a year. And they can always be excused by board vote, but if you don't make at least 50% of your meetings, then you are subject to removal. That's a grounds for removal. Devote time, thought and study to the duties of a board member in order to render effective and informed service. Work with other board members to establish effective board policies. Delegate authority for the administration of the college to the president and CEO and act on behalf of the board only with the official authorization of a majority of the members of the board. Make policy decisions only after full discussion at a publicly held meeting. Base all your decisions on the available facts and independent judgment, free from any undue or improper influence, and abide by and uphold the final majority decision of the board. I will say that in past history, with this board, and, but you're not unique in this, in this situation, I've read other cases and other situations where it's happened with other boards. Board will deliberate an issue, maybe not be exactly 100% consensus or unanimous on it, and, and then vote is taken and a commitment is made by the board, and a board member will go on and publicly criticize or, or denigrate or get, get, get in the way of that. And that can lead to censure. But you, you see what it does. I mean, if you've had the opportunity to come here and deliberate it here, then, then that's it. You're done. And you might be not happy about that, but there, depending on how, how far the discontent goes, you know, you can begin to kind of erode the, the integrity of the decision and the credibility, you know, of what this board has done. So respect each other and your final decision. Next is avoid during a pending bidding, solicitation, selection or appointment process, any communications with involved vendors, contractors, bidders or applicants outside of the board established process. The board chair or other designee will provide information or answer questions for the public about the process.
May I ask you a question about Jeff? Would you, that talks specifically about bidding, solicitation, but it, but it also talks about bidders or applicants. Would you tell us that you think that also applies to businesses that may be seeking a tax abatement or approval of a TERS as we've recently seen?
I would, I would think so. I mean, if it's something that's going to come before you to vote now, I, I will say this, I mean, there's, there's got to be a way to provide information, you know, for any, you know, any of these outside entities or parties. And so if you've got that process set up, then, you know, that, there's got to be a way to, to answer questions about it.
Right. And this provides for the board chair to provide information, but we've seen recently that some of us have been contacted outside of the meeting. And, I mean, how I read that is that the appropriate response is, we have a process, Carol Scott's our board chair, Mark Escamilla is the college president, it's appropriate for you to contact them. Okay. Thank you.
I would agree with that. Any other questions? And the obvious, and the obvious, you know, concern there is not that any of you are going to do anything wrong, but that in conversations that, you know, there may be expectations, you know, unduly raised or, you know, you just, you just have to be careful about that. And also you want to avoid the appearance of any, you know, impropriety before the vote is taken. You're a public body, everything has to happen here, so. Recognize that the college adheres to the concepts of free speech and academic freedom. Encourage the free expression of opinion by all board members. Seek systematic communications between the board with students, faculty, staff and the community while refraining from communicating with them in any way which could be interpreted as having any authority outside the meetings of the board and refraining from any communications among a quorum of the board members outside of the board meeting. Communicate to other board members and the president and CEO of the college expressions of public reaction to board policies and college programs. You're going to, every one of you I know gets calls. Every one of you is, 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 is approached, I was going to say accosted, but approached, approached in public and, and, and told of concerns. And all of you dutifully report that to Dr. Escamilla. Work with others, other board members and the president in a spirit of harmony and cooperation and in a manner that creates and sustains mutual respect. Become informed about current educational issues by individual study and also through participation in programming that takes place at the state and national level. Support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as college faculty and staff. You do all this through policy. Remember always that the first and greatest priority must be the educational welfare of the students attending the college. I don't think anybody who's listened to your last few meetings would doubt that every one of you is, is absolutely devoted to the educational welfare of your, of the students of Delmar College. Avoid real or apparent conflicts of interest and refrain from engaging in any activity that could create a conflict of interest. Refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain. I've always found that to be curious. I mean, I'm familiar with lots of different elected officials, and I'm not sure that community college regents or trustees have a lot of, have a lot of leverage or stroke, but you, you know, that's not, that's not to bring you all down, but you, you guys really do, you do, you do God's work in many ways. Bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all applicable statutes, regs and court decisions pertaining to community colleges. Work with the other board members to establish effective policies, practices that prohibit all forms of unlawful discrimination, including harassment. And that's what you do when you review your policies with Ms. McDonnell. Refrain from any attempt to influence any operational decision, including but not limited to admissions, personnel or purchasing decisions except when such is a legitimate issue at a board meeting. And no board member shall have any communications about a grievance or complaint with any person with a pending grievance or complaint. Again, identify and disclose any actual or potential conflict of interest and act for the general public good regardless of personal relationships or business interests. Refrain from suggesting or recommending subcontractors to vendors at any time. Subcontractors, yeah, to vendors. Encourage and engage in open and honest discussion in making board decisions, respect differences of opinion and keep an open mind until each regent has had an opportunity to address the board. Refrain from accepting or soliciting any gift, favor or service that might influence or appear to influence a regent and the performance of official duties. V, maintain strict confidentiality of information that you receive during closed session or that's proprietary to the college or that's about the college and not within the public Endeavor to avoid for a period of one year after leaving office, both the possibility of conflict of interest and the appearance of such conflict that would arise if the former regent takes employment or enters into a business relationship with any vendor, contractor, company or other individual or entity in a business relationship with the college. And conduct, with my help every year, this annual ethics update. Upon completion of which, you will sign the personal disclosure statement and the commitment to ethical conduct. Any questions so far? Demonstrate a personal commitment to ethical conduct by participating in this update, filing the document, the statement of ethical conduct and filing the personal disclosure Okay. This is section five under your bylaws, and I thought we should just do a quick run-through of conflicts of interest and prohibited benefits. So first, I'm going to go through the, what's, what's in your bylaws about this, and then I'm going to quickly go through the statutory requirements, where they come from. You can see that, you know, you are public servants, you're elected public officials and subject to the state of Texas's laws against conflicts of interest and other things like bribery, abuse of office. You shall not accept or agree to accept or solicit any gift, favor, service or benefit that you know or should reasonably know is offered with the intent to influence your decision or action, or may appear to influence any decision or action. Likewise, you shall not solicit, accept or agree to accept any gift, services or other benefits from having exercised the powers and responsibilities of your official positions. This is specific, I mean, number one, and this, these are subparts under five. You have, you shall not accept gifts either in kind or of money from a vendor. Gifts include any items not obviously of an advertising nature. That's under the Texas Penal Code. Gifts of an advertising nature are those with the name of the firm affixed which have an estimated value of $50 or less. You shall not solicit an employee for favors, services or other benefits. You shall identify and disclose any actual or potential conflict of interest in accordance with Chapter 171 of the Texas Local Government Code. Any such disclosure form shall be provided to the board at the next scheduled meeting following the filing and posted on the college's website. Little bit more about that in a second. You shall also avoid a conflict of interest in the appearance of any conflict with regard to former private sector employers, clients or close business associates. Again, these are folks that you were either employed with or had as clients or with, were close business associates with before getting into board. You shall avoid a conflict of interest or the appearance of such with any such entity or individuals by avoiding participation in matters likely to provide a direct and substantial benefit to former employers, clients or close business associates. So you catch the front end and the back end of your service. Conflict disclosures fall under three general laws in Texas, Chapter 171 of the Texas Local Government Code. This covers a substantial interest in a business or real property. Chapter 533 of the Texas Government Code has to do with interest in property that's to be acquired by the college. And then 176 of the Local Government Code addresses income, gift and family relationship disclosures by local government officers and vendors. So, so the policies or the bylaw provisions that we just went through are based on these, but I wanted to kind of go through these quickly as well. So Chapter 171 disclosures, this comes up when you have a substantial interest in a business entity, either, when, when either you or a relative to the first degree, we're talking about, you know, those are included in the batch of conflicts. You own 10% or more of voting stock or shares of entity in a business entity, or you own 10% or more, or $15,000 or more of the fair market value of the entity, when you've, when you received 10% or more of the gross income in the prior year from that entity. In those situations, you need to, you need to declare a disclosure. Also occurs with substantial interest in real property that you either own or that's owned by a first degree relative with a fair market value of $2,500 or more. It comes up when, it also comes up when the property that you own, as a result of board action, there's going to be a special economic effect on the property that's distinguishable from any impact on the public. So by action, some action that you're going to take on the board is going to have a special economic effect on property that you own, that's not something that's going to be generally available to the public, then you should file a disclosure under 171. The process is you file an affidavit with the college stating the extent and nature of the interest before a vote or decision is made on it, and you should abstain for participation and not be present for deliberation and vote. The, the second part of that, I mean, the abstention is, is, is pretty clear once you file the conflict disclosure, but the not being present for deliberation and vote actually comes from an attorney general opinion, so it's not the law, but I consider it best practice. You shouldn't be in the room at all, so that there's no question that you weren't influencing with a nod of the head or a wink and a nod, and, and just not be in the room at all. That's the safest way to do it.
Does that include closed session discussions in your mind?
Probably. Yeah, probably. But I mean, certainly when the matter comes out and is deliberated, you know, and voted on in public, for sure.
So I have a question related to this, specifically relating to TERS and, and properties within TERS boundaries. Does a regent need to not participate because of that conflict of interest if they're, if they own property within that TERS boundary? Because they're, they would?
Probably.
Okay.
Yep, probably.
Even though that specific property isn't different than any other property within the TERS boundaries? So that they're not, I just, I find that interesting because you're making a decision about a broad boundary of land, not a small boundary of land, but...
But not everybody's benefiting from that, ultimately that economic impact.
But everybody within that TERS has the same impact?
But not everybody within your taxing district.
Gotcha. Okay. So, so the differentiation is, is large as a TERS boundary might be?
Right.
That is not the same as the entire taxing district?
Exactly.
Okay.
I will say that that, I've actually looked at that and consulted with, with, it, you're going to love this because it's a typical lawyer answer. You know, it's arguable both ways. So all I can do is tell you, I mean, you know, with, without giving, you know, lots of, you know, there you go. Lots of legal advice, I mean, that, that you could argue it that, wait a minute, because it, it really does have a pretty wide impact and it's not my property exactly. That's one argument. On the others, on the other hand, it's not everybody in your taxing district that you represent.
So along those lines, do you, do we need to have a discussion about our past practice of appointing representatives, Delmar representatives to a TERS who own property within that TERS?
So we've typically tried to make the appointments based on district representation at, if that district representative wants to do that. I don't think we've ever done it based on, but, but you're saying should they abstain because they own property within the TERS?
Within the TERS.
Right.
I understand they may own property within the district and that may, that may not be included in the TERS, but sometimes we may.
I don't think it would present a conflict from serving on the TERS.
Okay.
But again, erring on the side of caution.
Right. But you're, you're not making a decision at that point about
That's right.
The tax increment, you're only making a decision about how to spend the money.
Right.
I mean, they would need to, they would need to abstain on specific things. You know, for instance, if there was an incentive for a project next door to the building that they owned, they'd probably need to abstain from that. I, I don't think we've seen very much of that, but I, I know when I was on council, when we'd do a bond package, I'd abstain. do a bond package, I'd abstain from all of the roads that went past something I owned or had an interest in. And so, I mean, it's not as complicated, I think, as people think it is.
I think that's right. I mean, I think if you see it and you know that it's right next to you and you're benefiting from it, your sensors are going to go off, and you're going to say, I probably shouldn't vote on this.
So you could serve as a representative, but then abstain from a vote within that TERS Board if you needed to, like you would here? Okay.
That's how I see it.
I always tell people, too, to think about it as a, it can help defend you in your personal life as well. I was on the Board of Adjustment, and I got a case where it was a fight between a business partner and a girlfriend's family, and I was like, I don't want to be involved in this. Like, I don't, like, if I opened my mouth one way or the other, I'm in trouble. So, I mean, you know, it's intended to protect you from having to make a decision that upsets a business partner or a client or something like that. And so, don't like, just, I mean, it's a great way to say, we got these rules, we got this law, I can't vote. Sorry, don't talk to me about it, go talk to Carol.
Let me help you out a little bit there with Regent Loeb. I mean, it's not just a personal avoidance or sidestepping. I mean, frankly, that's why you build in, you know, appearances of impropriety whenever you're not comfortable with something, because that's where ethics is, right, in that area? And they may be doing you a favor in that instance, but the fact of the matter is you weren't comfortable with it for what could come out of it, and that itself is, you know, a basis sometimes to abstain or recuse.
Well, and the point is to not have anything other than the interest of the organization in your mind when you're making a decision.
If it's going to lead to a distraction or even more conflict, then, yeah, better to step aside. Thank you for sharing. Chapter 533 has to do with what you're required to disclose. Again, when we're talking about property that the College is going to acquire, obviously you got to do a 171 affidavit, but there's an additional affidavit under the Government Code that has to be filed with the County Clerk's Office. And then finally, Chapter 176 disclosures. This has to do with relationships between officers, it says officers. LGO is a local government officer. You're basically an LGO. Anyone who exercises discretion in planning, recommending, selecting, or contracting with a vendor is an LGO. So that includes, for example, you know, administrators. I mean, it's not just anybody who's involved in the process this covers. It's not just you all as the elected officials. An affidavit must be filed if you or someone of first-degree relative has a relationship with a vendor that generates taxable income, which is more than $2,500 in the preceding 12 months from awareness of the contract or the prospective contract. Also applies to gifts that total over $100 in a 12-month period, again, from the awareness of the contract or prospective contract. If there's a family relationship between you and a potential vendor, including the vendor's employees or agents, that's got to be disclosed. And there are specific forms that are actually put out by the Ethics Commission on that, Form CIS, which the official fills out. And then the vendor itself has to also file an affidavit with the College disclosing the relationship. All right, well, let me say, any questions about 171, or 833, or 176, or anything we've gone through? I appreciate you all listening and going through this. Let me wrap up with a couple of things. So you may have been aware, this is actually from the Attorney General's website just yesterday. So the Attorney General of the State of Texas has sued six different ISDs for illegal electioneering, and has actually been able to obtain, I think, an injunction in one instance and a temporary restraining order in another. And the allegation is that public resources are being misused improperly in electioneering. Electioneering is when you advocate for or against a candidate, or for or against a measure, or for or against a particular political party. So this is not, I'm not commenting on it other than just to report it to you that, again, it's ISDs, but you are all subject to the same, you know, rules against using public resources for electioneering, as we are, as employees of the College. This applies college-wide, but I just wanted to bring that up to your attention.
Well, based on my experience, particularly with bond proposals, you got to walk a very fine line...
We do.
...between advocating for the proposals and providing information.
We've actually driven that car a couple of times at least, right, Dr. Eskamia? In 2014, 20, you're absolutely correct. You've got to be very careful about how, you can be informational. I mean, there was, there's a Caller Times editorial that Dr. Eskamia wrote with the then Chair of the Board. I don't think it was you, Chair Scott, was it? It was, must have been Trey, where it was scrutinized and we made sure that it was, again, providing information to the public. You can do that all day long, but you've got to be careful because there is a line there, and once you cross that line, you can get in trouble. So, all right. And so for me, let me sum it up. I'll finish with how I started the meeting at the front end and explain to you, and tell you that I think ethics is kind of simple. All you have to do is look at the 12 points of the Scout Law. Okay, so every Scout, I thought you all would appreciate that. Every, if Mike and Amy were here, they would be nodding their heads in encouragement, and every Scout, once they join Scouts, has to learn the Scout Oath and the Scout Law, and they recite it every week at their troop meetings. And Scout Law as a Scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, brave, clean, and reverent. And I'd submit to you that if you all can do just that, then you're going to be fine. Any questions? That's all I have. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Regents. Appreciate it.
Your disclosure, you have to expect for the middle, and we give those back to the body. Not the affidavit, that's the gift, yes. Yeah, the extension affidavit is only here saying...
Right. I just think that as a common...
All right. Let's look at our, thank you very much, Audrey, we appreciate that. So let's look at our calendar for the rest of the, the rest of the... Congratulations. After we make it to spring break 2024. I hope that everybody has a great recall. Our board meeting is going to be later in the normal, it's going to be April 16.
My mic isn't on. Y'all missed all of that wonderful discussion. Congratulations to our faculty and staff. You made it to spring break 2024. I want my folks watching to understand our good wishes for you all. Board meeting in April is going to be on the 16th. We have our Service Awards the morning of Friday, the 26th. And our Board meeting in May is going to be on May the 14th, with graduation scheduled for May the 17th. Were there any other calendar announcements that you wanted to make, Dr. Eskamia?
None.
All right, then, with no further business before us, oh, we have to go into closed session.
Closed session.
We have to go into closed session.
I wonder what you're doing.
All right, the Board will, sorry, I was getting so excited, I thought we were almost finished. Sorry, sorry. The, well, you talked for so long, I just kind of felt like we were...
She's not ever really heard of you.
There we go. The Board will now go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding consultation with legal counsel and Government Code 551.074A1 Personnel Matters, and the All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have returned from closed session at 4:10 PM. There was no action items coming out of closed session. We've already done our calendaring, and so with no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 4:10 PM.